Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being here tonight. And we're going to try to get this through as fast as possible because the kickoff of the National Football Scholar winners are starting about seven o'clock, which would mean the kickoff be by 7:15, 7:30, so we'll see how this works out. But if you will please rise, we'll have an invocation night by Councilmember, I mean, Pastor Ken Gurley, First Church, and Councilmember Carbone will lead us in pledge allegiance.
I pray your eye of favor would be upon this room. Would you lay your hand on every one of us, God? Guide the deliberations and the decisions. Let your presence be made evident. We ask all these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and universal.
Thank all of you for being here tonight as we go through the process. And if you have an agenda, I will follow the same agenda here, so you can keep, well, keep tabs on me and the progress we're making through the meeting. And as we go into, go through the agenda right now, I'll call upon item three, which is a roll call of the City Council. All of our council members are here except for Hernandez, who has said he caught the flu and he didn't want to bring it down here. And I told him, smart move. So that, so we are here with our bright and shiny faces, moving in our agenda also to item number four, which is consent agenda and citizen agenda, excuse me, and have a council member Little present that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got two citizens which speak tonight. The first one, Jimmy Davis, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. As Mayor mentioned, we have a game tonight.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsville Street, Pearland, 775-84. A couple of things. First off, I want to say, Mayor Reed, as a six-year resident of Pearland, I love our city. My wife, who's a lifelong Pearland resident, has seen great growth. I thank you. I think all of us here should look and say, you have exemplified through military service, through public service, a lifetime of public service and a heart for this city. We thank you for, for taking part in building an amazing city. I'm on the talk of Pearland, many of us are. There have been a whole lot of citizen complaints about water bills after water meters are exchanged. People that use 6,000 gallons a month get a bill for 45,000, and the city tells them, I'll give you a hundred dollar credit, take it or leave it. I don't know how far along into the water meter change-out process we are, but if we have a substantial way to go and there's a whole lot of people that's complaining about what's going on after meters are changed, I, I think the city needs to look at getting out ahead of it. And if we got a way, a ways to go, maybe a citizen oversight committee put together that people can kind of review and just say, look, what's going on with the residents of the city? Why are their water bills shooting up after we're changing out meters? Just help, help restore some public confidence because it's just a little shaken. Last thing, by the, by the Centennial Park where I live, we have a crosswalk that is on, that crosses McLean that goes to the, it's like a frisbee golf area that comes from the splash pad side. There's a bridge there, so as cars come over, it's kind of hard to see people in it. We used to have a sign there that when people were crossing, had this bright flashing yellow sign that was up high enough that as a car approaching, you knew there was someone in the crosswalk. Well, for whatever reason, that is now gone. I run over at that park, it gets dark really early. I've had some close calls with cars flying over the bridge and there's no way for me to push a button, let them know, hey, there's people crossing. I don't know who made the decision to pull that down. I'm sure we spent a lot of money on a nice system that helps protect public safety. And I don't know why we would just do away with it. I would ask that to be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Jeff Hunkel.
Mine was actually to a specific item.
Okay, you can come up and go ahead and speak on. Reason I'm calling you up is we're not pulling anything from the agenda tonight, so.
Okay, fair enough. My name is Jeff Hunkley. I live at 3912 Oakwood Drive North, Pearland, Texas. So I wanted to talk about the consent item B, which was the traffic software. One thing, I looked at the software and one thing I wanted to find out is, will the public have access to the website in order to monitor the traffic congestion and alter their routes? Or is this just a closed system that someone is going to monitor? And then along with that, it said, the software for the pilot is actually free, but what is the cost of the software if implemented at other locations? And what are the terms of that license agreement? Are we locked into something? Another comment agenda was for consent agenda C. It states that there will be an increase of 53,000 or 4.4 million gallons, but that's if there will be three new tanks built. And my question is, is if by chance those tanks aren't in service by then, by the end of the year, does the city actually get that 53,000 back? And do we get credit for that if it's not used? One of the other items is for item number E. I looked at the, there was a renewed contract for $95,000, and after summing all of the line items, it only comes up to just over 52,000. So what I did was to puff up those numbers, I include two hours of service for every AC unit and trying to get up close to that value. And this is still comes out to about 30K less than the awarded contract. So what I was suggesting is, I would think for every contract renewal, especially with the same vendor, excess money awarded for those instruments should be better estimated by consider historical data from the previous year. What was the average time to perform the service call? And how many service calls were required outside of the normal two-year maintenance? And maybe we can actually adjust that contract and save some money there. And then again, if the unused money isn't used, do we get that back if it's not used? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, completes that. Councilmember Orlando, would you present the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull items B, C, and E.
Thank you.
I'd like to pull items B, C, and E.
B, C, and E. That's the app that you worked on.
Consideration of possible action on the consent agenda with the exception of items B, C, and E, so moved.
Of motions. Do I hear a second on it? Good.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
An agenda item, after six, zero.
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2020-11, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're in discussions. Staff report.
For item B, Mr. Mayor, this is a recommendation for a traffic control system. As is described in the AR, we're going, converting our traffic management system to different than the cameras that monitor the traffic movements and adjust the signals. We're going to these pucks that are in the, embedded into the pavement. It's a proven technology, but new for us. We will be working on those on the Bailey Road corridor and then evaluating and growing from there. We've got a very robust traffic monitoring system. As the council's aware, we shared that we've got different system for traffic monitoring. We've worked hard and got that integrated into the TransStar program for traffic monitoring. It's available to the public, but this is different. This is just the, will be used for the configuration of the different signals, allocating time and making adjustments to the operating system. Anything else?
Councilor, do you have any question to comment regarding the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this because of a public comment. I guess staff hit on it, but just to confirm, we don't have any traffic software that we open to the public, but we do interface out to TransStar.
We make it to the public through TransStar rather than trying to build our own system, make that through some website. I mean, it just makes sense. If you're looking at traffic in Pearland and TransStar's got the proven, so that's how it's all made available. So we've got 35 some cameras on there and growing that as we go along.
And in terms of the pilot, the software for the pilot study is at no cost. Do we have any idea on what that looks like after the pilot's complete?
Well, that'll be a part of the evaluation going forward, so we'll evaluate that and then expand that and bring that back to you all.
Thank you.
Do you have a question? From council. Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2020-3, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. We're in discussions. Staff report.
So this is a contract for water treatment chemicals. There's another one on the regular agenda as well. These are unit price contracts, and as we've said, we pay for them as we use them. It's just, as it states in the title, an estimated amount, and that's based upon both combination of historical usage and then also any anticipated growth in the system. And so that's what this is. We don't pay for anything until we use it and need it, so it's pretty straightforward.
Anything, any comments from council on this item?
So the additional 53K budgeted and projected for 2020, if, I mean, that, that's just a budgeted line item. If we don't consume that due to the, one of the, the ground storage tanks coming online, then it will just come in under budget.
Exactly. We don't, we're just looking ahead and realize we're going to have additional equipment that's good, that we're, rather than come back and amending the, the contract, we're looking forward and made that estimate. And as I said, and as you were aware, we don't pay for it until we need it and use it. Thank you.
You know, that's one of the things I appreciate about this time and the reason I didn't pull anything off, is we're looking in there in the way this comes up now, that it shows what the actual usage was in 2018 and then usage in 2019. And that's where we come with the estimate, but, but I like it where it shows that now. Previously, we had been showing that to see what had been used in the past. And so I think that's a good addition to our budget process now. And like you say, these are not lump sum contracts. They're, you'll pay for what you use in, in these areas, so that's good. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other comments from council? We have a second, motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Who had a B?
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2020-4, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Again, this is another renewal of a contract for a firm that's done well by us, serving the city. This is, we have a number of generators that are lift stations in major facilities, so those need to be exercised and tested. This is the company that does that for us on a regular schedule. We are adding equipment, such as the council's aware, we're the Natorium and some other locations, and so the, the estimated amount anticipates that. Do need some help if something, maybe as alluded to, how the components, please add up to the 95.
Sure, the, the bids are on basically the preventative maintenance and testing of the generators annually, and that's, there's unit prices for that. And then we got unit prices on labor, normal hours, after hours, and then markup on any supplies or materials or, or parts for any repairs or emergency repairs that are not covered under the preventive maintenance. So based on historical spend, we've got that much in the contract to cover any repairs or emergency repairs.
Mayor and Council, if there's questions, as we publish the agendas on Thursdays and public or anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to the staff, myself or anybody in our office, and we can answer these questions and be thorough and complete about that and provide those ahead of time going forward, too.
Okay, does council have any question coming out of this report? Hearing done, Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second there.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Okay, moving in our agenda to item seven. That is removed from consent agenda, and we just removed three of those and addressed them. Item eight is new business. Councilmember Carbone, would you present item one, new business item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution R 2020-17, resolution of appreciation for Councilmember Derek Reed, so moved.
Second.
How've you been doing? Time. Wonderful. You know, we've had wonderful city council members. We're all sort of count them as part of our family and make sure that we recognize the fact that, recognize. I could talk a notch too loud or it'd be about as good. But this, but this is much. Are you sure you did this? Now it works. It takes a read to be able to thump the top and make it work. It'll take a read to read this to you now. This is a resolution, City of Pearland, where as the hearing after named, as unselfishly contributed its time, talent, and energies. Energy? Yeah. To serve people of the City of Pearland, Texas, and where such contributions become a part of the foundation upon which the city stands, and where as the members of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Bazaar, Harris, and Fort Bend Counties, State of Texas, deem it fitting and proper to recognize the service and contribution of Derek Reed, Councilmember, 2014, 2019, and Mayor Protem of 2017. Now therefore be it resolved and signatures fixed and attested to and bear witness that the hearing number, numbered citizens signed this proclamation and do gratefully acknowledge and service the opportunities that you have presented to us in the past. And with that, there's passed by 13th day of July, AD 2020, which happens to be the day. You can tell it's, it's really, it's a foundation for telling us fine individual. And you know, us Reed's, when we're standing together like this, it's hard to tell which Reed is which. He's just about four inches taller than I am, so that you can always tell the difference. But Derek, I want to tell you, I appreciate very much what you've contributed over the years. You were a great Bear Protem. You bailed me out on several occasions, which is always a perk. So let me present this to you, and let's get our picture taken. That's Derek Reed here. Let me present this to you as well. Let's take a picture of this. Derek, thank you so much for your contribution. You've made Pearland a different city. I'm taking my man out in spite of that. Now because of that, so. Proclamation, did you get that?
Oh, yes, Mayor. I have it in my paper. Let's say a few words.
You'd better believe real. Say a few words. Give us your name and address and tell us who you are.
I'll say, I'll say it up here. Councilmember Carbone didn't finish reading the rest of the, the resolution to recognize his contributions to service. No, it's 2015 to 2019. Just, just real quick, Derek Reed, 11601 Shadow Creek Parkway, Pearland, Texas, 77584.
Don't worry, Council, then limit your comments to 30 seconds.
I just want to read a quick quote. Everybody can be great because everybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your own, I'm sorry, you don't have to make subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love. I, I can honestly say that, you know, there were meetings that I came to where my head wasn't in it, but my heart was always in serving the citizens of Pearland. And so, you know, for that, I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve with these gentlemen and two others that, that are not up here tonight, but have gone on to do different things. You know, like I said, I think that everybody up here knows that it's a sacrifice. I mean, in the prayer, it was stated that, you know, it's, it's, it's you all's sacrifice to give back to this community. You're sacrificing time with your families, you're sacrificing time for yourself, and I definitely know that sacrifice. And so I appreciate you all letting me serve with you. I appreciate you all giving me the advice that you've given me. Mayor, you, you definitely have exemplified service. I know that you're an example to everybody in this room, not just everybody up here with you. I mean, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a sad day when it's your last day here on this council, but you have definitely set an example for all of us on how to lead, and I appreciate you for that. One of the things about serving on council that I can say now, especially doing what I'm doing now and running for the position that I'm running for right now, is this is one of the few places that you don't have to worry about party, you don't have to worry about, you know, what another group thinks. I mean, you can just serve the people, and, you know, I miss that. I can definitely say that I miss the Monday nights. And, you know, I know some folks that been on, off, and back on, and, you know, I, I see why you came back on now, Tony. So, you know, one of the things that was mentioned the other night at an event that I was at, Gary was there, and Councilmember Orlando was there, and Councilmember Hernandez was there. Councilmember Orlando mentioned that this city is the most diverse city in this area. And I want, I want to say, you said, one of the most diverse cities in the country. More than 10% of every race lives in this city, and that's amazing. I didn't know that. And I want to say to you all, although that's not represented on council, because the council is very different without me. I don't know if anybody else noticed that, but it looks extremely different. But you all still can be representative of everybody that elected you, not even the people that didn't vote for you, the people that, or not even the people that did vote for you, but the people that didn't vote for you. There's different ways you can get involved. You can go to the HOA meetings on different sides of town. You can go to organizational meetings, organizational events. Try to get outside of the box. I definitely encourage you all to get engaged in that other 10% that's represented by every other group in this city, because you all represent them and you do a good job at it. But I know that they want to hear from you, they want to see you, and I know that's important to them. Clay, you're doing a great job, man. I've always told you that. You've brought this city to different levels, to where I think it needs to be, and I'm sure you're going to continue to take it on. John and Trent, thanks for always responding to my rants. They just came randomly, but you always both acted, you know, efficiently, effectively. You guys are great leaders. Staff, you know, I love working with you all. You know, everybody on staff has always been great. Matt, you know, I look, I, I miss giving you headaches, man, but no, you, you have bought the Kirby Corridor and everything else as far as economic development up in this city, and that's, that's, that's great to see. I was riding past Tool Flow the other day, and I thought immediately about you because you just always said it with such emphasis, Tool Flow. And then Darren, you know, I don't know much to say about you, man. I didn't really like you much. No, Darren, you are, you are truly one of the best lawyers I know, and I'm not BSing you, man. You are a great lawyer. You're great for this city. You know, I, I, there's going to be a day when it's your last day as well, and that's going to be a sad day for the city, but you're a great lawyer. Just want to say thank you to everybody and thank you, Pearland. Let me leave this, leave this.
Derek, you take care of yourself. Good luck on your, on your election process. And if you go, if you get to be... And, uh, if you go, if you get to be congressman, we'll come up, see ya. Moving in our agenda to item number two, councilmember Little. Oh, that's right. Hey, it's not over yet. You may not, they had to give all that stuff back. We've got to take a vote on this. We have motion second on the floor here.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Backed out again then, Derek. Now moving in our agenda to item number two, councilmember Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2020-6. A resolution of the city council of the city of Pearland, expressing appreciation for Mayor Tom Reed and his exemplary service as mayor of the city of Pearland for thirty-nine years in creating the honorary position of mayor emeritus for Mayor Tom Reed.
Give a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Oh, uh, Mayor, uh, this is, uh, really the council's doing, but, uh, I know for a fact that, uh, uh, as soon as, literally that night, when you, uh, shared that you were not intending to run again, that there was a immediate interest to, uh, uh, provide some avenue that, uh, is semi-formal where you could continue to, uh, do, uh, some of the great things you've done in terms of representing this community in this city, uh, in, in Pearland, in the metro area, uh, that you would have an avenue with, uh, this mayor emeritus title to continue to, uh, show the Pearland flag that you've done so proudly for all these years and, uh, really show and represent, uh, the best of Pearland in, in different functions. So look forward, uh, with, uh, the presumed passage of this resolution that's been created. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Coker for putting this together, uh, and the council enthusiastic endorsement, uh, that we, uh, have this opportunity. It's very unique, uh, one-off. I probably won't be able to see one of these again, uh, but it's entirely appropriate and justified and, uh, look forward to working with you in this, uh, new role and, and the elected mayor, uh, going forward after you formally step down. So, uh, for the council's consideration.
Council, let me comment some questions regarding that report.
Mayor, I'd just like to say, uh, it's been an honor serving with you and to continue serving with you and currently serving as your mayor pro tem. Uh, you'll just have to wait till your final day up here before we start giving you those thirty-nine pictures we've been storing in the back there.
Yes, it's been an honor serving with you, Mayor, and, uh, it, it will be a sad day for the city when you, uh, finally stepped down as mayor. Um, but thank you for all your years of service and your dedication. Um, you, you've put in a lot of hours to this city and a lot of hours to the residents of this city. Um, you've always done everything as a gentleman, and that's what I appreciate about you the most is, uh, you're, you just have a kind heart and, um, it, it really shows. Um, but thank you for everything you've done for Pearland.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Uh, just to echo the sentiment, I think, um, uh, your leadership has been profound. Um, the example you've set for all of us about, um, uh, not just being a gentleman, but also, um, acting in a professional manner, particularly, uh, on matters for which we disagree. Uh, for, for those of us who have the opportunity to see other councilmembers or other boards, uh, operate, um, civility is sometimes lost. Um, uh, particularly when there's disagreements, but sometimes when there are even agreements um, about trivial matters, I think that, um, your ability to, um, hold the boat on a steady course and allow all of us to learn how to operate in that, in a professional manner, um, uh, is unprecedented, I think, in governance, uh, at least as far as I've seen. Uh, this move or this measure allows us to continue to learn from you uh, as other councilmembers, uh, uh, come aboard over this election cycle and future. Uh, we have the opportunity for you to continue to teach, uh, teach us and teach those exactly how a, um, a servant leader operates. I will say this now and I'll say it repeatedly over the next few months. It's been an honor serving with you and, uh, I'm honored to continue to serve with you in this new capacity once, uh, once your term is ended.
Mayor, uh, it has been a, a, a good long ride. We've served together for fifteen years now. Been a long time. And, uh, the only thing I can say is that, you know, it's, it's, uh, it was a learning experience and I was mayor pro tem at one time, and you couldn't have pried Tom out of town and let me run a council. He wouldn't do that. He knew what would happen. But now it, it's, it's been an honor to, uh, to serve with you and I know that you will continue to serve on the many boards that you're on now, but you will continue to be the, the face of Pearland. No matter who's sitting in that chair over there, you'll continue to be. And what always got me is when we'd do the Pearland Day in Austin and we'd go up there and spend a lot of time, everybody will know what Tom Reed was doing. Where's he at? You know, and, uh, of all the elected officials up there, and I thought that was, that was just great that, that Pearland went all the way to Austin up there, but the main thing that any elected official sitting up there wanted to find out, even the governor with period during that time, will know where Tom Reed was. Was he up there with us? And how's he doing? So you not only did it from here, but you did it from Austin and, uh, and you really, you know, helped put Pearland on the map. You've done a, a yeoman's job on, on that and I appreciate you.
Mayor, it's been, uh, an incredible opportunity to serve with you these past several months. Um, I'm grateful that I have had the opportunity to do that uh, and also grateful that, that you're still willing to, uh, to put up with us, uh, in, in this capacity and, and offer your, your help and advice. So, um, very grateful. Again, we'll have the opportunity over the next several months to, to continue to, uh, reflect on how far Pearland has come under your stewardship, but, um, thank you very much. This is an incredibly well-deserved honor and we are, uh, fortunate that you're willing to accept it. Thank you.
Mayor, they all hit on everything, so let's vote and make it official.
Councilmember Little?
A resounding aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Absolutely, one hundred percent yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Beat me in all the adjectives. I'll just say.
Say yes. Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
You bet. Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
You know, this is not sort of embarrassing for me because I don't, uh, do things for notoriety or for recognition, but, um, I do appreciate your comments. I've, um, enjoyed what I do and, uh, I've been busy doing and enjoying what I like to do. I wouldn't be this old, uh, to, to gain the age that I have today. And one of my, uh, sort of goals in the future is to live to be ninety-five like, uh, President Carter, except I'm gonna be a little different. He falls and breaks things. And I want to make sure that I keep, keep it whole because I'm, I'm gonna head for a hundred. But, uh, I will be here until June and I will continue doing exactly what I'm doing today, and that is stay busy, see if we can't make a city even a better place and, uh, something that we are gonna be, through the years, be so very proud of what we have here and what we built. Pearland is special and let's keep it that way. And I'm gonna make dang sure that my energies are focused in that direction. And thank you very much, guys. I appreciate you. Moving in. Thank you so much. You guys are very special. Moving in our agenda to item number three, I'm gonna ask Clay Person if he would, uh, lead us in this particular part of our agenda.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so item three is a, a report. Uh, we've had the opportunity to, uh, participate in this, uh, uh, community survey, uh, for last six years. And, uh, by doing that every other year, it provides a regular interval where we're able to, uh, uh, seek residents' perspectives on, uh, a, a wide, wide variety of different, uh, measures. Uh, the firm we've engaged in this, uh, allows us, they do this all over the country, so we provide some, uh, benchmarks and examples. Um, you know, there's gonna be a lot of materials that you'll hear and see and, and realize that, uh, you know, we could take as like, well, we knew that already, but, uh, this quantifies that. It shows changes over time. It shows comparisons to, uh, other communities. And, uh, so it provides us a tool, uh, to measure progress and, as we just stated, uh, you know, in this changing dynamic community, it's important that we, uh, undertake a, a business practice like this. So, uh, we've got a representative here from, uh, the firm that completed that and she'll be, uh, making the presentation now. So, Meg, uh, Megan, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm really pleased to be here speaking to you tonight about the results of your twenty nineteen national community survey. My name is Jade Orocha and I was the project manager for this survey. Um, and I don't want to hold anybody up from watching any games, so we'll dive right in here. A little bit about the national community survey. It is a, one of the benefits of conducting a standardized survey such as the National Community Survey or the NCS is that, um, as Clay mentioned, it's, we have the ability to compare results across communities across the U.S. Um, so this survey is a five-page standardized survey. It also allows us to keep costs low as a result of that standardization and our topic areas cover about a hundred and thirty individual items in three broad categories that, um, community characteristics, governance, which is, um, ratings of government services, and then also rates of participation in various activities in the community. As well as those three pillars, we also break the data down by community facet. These can align somewhat to, um, city departments. These facets, which I'll go into in a little bit more detail shortly, are safety, mobility, also known as transportation, natural environment, built environment, economy, recreation and wellness, education and enrichment, and community engagement, as well as a few broad indicators that fit into an overall quality of community category. Uh, the NCS specifically for Pearland, um, we have conducted this survey, this same survey in, in twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, and now, most recently, in twenty nineteen. The survey was mailed to twenty-one hundred randomly selected households within city limits. And of those twenty-one hundred households that received the mailing, we received three hundred and four completed surveys for a fifteen percent response rate and a margin of error of plus or minus six percent. Those mailings were sent out in the beginning of August twenty nineteen. Uh, it was a three-part mailing, started with a pre-notification postcard letting residents know to look for the survey in the mail. Um, those mailing materials were branded with the city logo, letterhead signed by both mayor and city manager. Um, they contained instructions in both English and Spanish and, um, those that received the survey could also have the option to go online to complete the survey in either English or Spanish. Further, we tracked, um, responses by geographic sub-area, and you can see those five geographic sub-areas here on the map. Um, different regions of the city, west, north, northeast, southeast, and south, demarcated by, uh, major thoroughfares and intersections. And we also broke the data down by, um, demographic subgroup comparisons as well. Those demographic subgroups were age, gender, race and ethnicity, housing tenure, meaning, uh, rent versus, uh, own your home, and then housing unit type, attached or detached. And all of this, um, detailed information is available in the full set of reports. A lot of information on the screen right now. I just briefly wanted to point out the demographic makeup. Um, this is a standard part of survey research where we compare the demographics of who we actually heard from to who actually lives in the city. And then we make a statistical adjustment, known as weighting, to correct for any differences there. So that step has been performed. This is an important part of making sure the data are representative. A map of other communities across the country that also conduct the National Community Survey. I mentioned those national benchmark comparisons earlier. Um, out of a hundred and twenty-one total items on the survey for which results could be benchmarked, ninety-eight of those were similar to the national averages. Eight items received higher ratings and fifteen were rated lower. Pearland also had a set of custom benchmarks made to a subset of communities from within our total database. Those communities were selected for, um, having populations and median household incomes similar to Pearland. And out of those a hundred and twenty-one comparisons that were available, a hundred and four were rated similarly to that custom subset. Four were rated higher and thirteen were rated lower. Finally, since we've conducted this survey over time, we look at the most recent survey in twenty seventeen. Twenty nineteen ratings, ninety-five items were rated similarly over time. One was rated higher and twenty-five were lower. I'll touch on those in more detail in just a few moments. Looking at our facets of livability that I mentioned earlier, um, this is our quality versus importance chart here. Um, the color coding indicates comparison to the benchmark, so that medium blue color, uh, that seven of the eight facets are, are shaded, that indicates that they're similar to national averages. Mobility was the one, um, area to receive lower than benchmark ratings. Further, those stars indicate the facets that residents indicated were most important to quality of life in Pearland. Those are safety, mobility, and economy. And I will quickly cover the key findings that were written up in the community livability report. Our first key finding, Pearland residents continue to enjoy a high quality of life. About nine in ten residents gave excellent or good ratings to Pearland as a place to raise children and Pearland as a place to live. Um, Pearland as a place to raise children was a higher-than-average rating. And then more than eight in ten gave positive ratings to their neighborhood as a place to live and to overall quality of life in the city. About three-quarters of residents were pleased with the overall image or reputation of Pearland as well as the city's overall appearance. And two-thirds gave excellent or good ratings to Pearland as a place to retire. These items were all similar to national benchmarks. Nine in ten residents would recommend living to, in Pearland to someone who asked, and eight in ten plan to remain in the city for the next five years. Second key finding, safety and economy are important focus areas with some ratings declining since twenty seventeen. Ninety-three percent of residents report feeling very or somewhat safe in their neighborhoods and eighty-one percent report feeling very or somewhat safe in the downtown commercial area. Eighty-four percent, um, gave excellent or good ratings to the overall feeling of safety in the city. These ratings were all similar to national averages. Looking at services related to safety, most of these ratings remain stable over time. You can see about nine in ten gave positive ratings to fire services, um, eighty-six percent to police and to ambulance and EMS services. And then, uh, about seven in ten roughly to fire prevention, crime prevention, emergency preparedness, and animal control. Um, two services did decline in ratings from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. Those were ambulance and EMS and crime prevention. Both of those saw an eight percent decrease since twenty seventeen. However, there was a twenty percent increase in emergency prepared, the rate of emergency preparedness of residents. Um, twenty percent more residents in twenty nineteen reported stocking supplies in preparation for an emergency. Looking at economic indicators for Pearland, about three-quarters of residents positively rated the overall economic health of the city as well as economic development in the city. And that latter rating was also higher than the benchmark. Other economic characteristics here, and again, the color coding indicates comparison to the benchmarks. Shopping opportunities higher than the national average, sixty-seven percent rated that as excellent or good. Overall quality of business and service establishments and Pearland as a place to work, similar to national averages there. And then Pearland as a place to visit, uh, slightly less than half of residents gave that positive rating and it was lower than average. Uh, further, some declines from twenty seventeen and twenty, to twenty nineteen here, um, indicated by those arrows, between eight to ten percent decreases for each of these. However, I do want to point out that, um, this line chart here also includes data from twenty fifteen. And so if we look at the slightly longer-term trend line here, what we see is that while ratings have declined since twenty seventeen, they're ratings have declined since 2017, they're now more in line with what was observed in 2015. So, the longer-term trend line is actually relatively stable, even for those items that decreased this year. Our third key finding, challenges are noted within mobility. About half of residents gave positive ratings to the overall ease of travel in the city, as well as availability of paths and walking trails. Less than half of residents gave positive ratings to ease of walking, ease of travel by car or by bicycle, and traffic flow on major streets. All of these items were lower than national averages. There were also some declines in mobility-related services here. Street cleaning, traffic enforcement, and street repair all declined from 2017 to 2019, and these were also lower than the national benchmarks. And finally, looking at alternative forms of transportation, about one in three residents were likely to have carpool instead of driving alone, or to have walked or biked instead of driving. These rates were also lower than what we observe elsewhere across the country. Finally, special topics. There is the ability to include custom questions on the survey. So, the first custom question that Pearland included was a question asking residents about where they get their information about the city. Overwhelmingly, the most utilized source of city information was the city website. About six in 10 residents used that as a major source of information, and another three in 10 used it as a minor source. You see the other listed possible information sources. Their city communications via social media, other city publications, et cetera, in descending order. I do want to point out here, though, that we strongly recommend utilizing as many information sources as possible when doing public outreach, simply because something is not the most utilized source of information does not mean that it is not still being used. And further, you're reaching different segments of your population with these different approaches for outreach. Another custom question here. The wording of this question was, please rate the leadership provided by the city's elected officials. Nearly two in 10 rated this as excellent, half rated this as good, about a quarter gave this a fair rating, and 9% rated this as poor. Since that's a custom question, we don't have benchmark comparisons available. I am happy to take questions at this point.
Well, that's a lot of information to digest, isn't it? But from a perspective of all of the activities and all of the factors that you checked out and percentage-wise, what would be two or three that would stand out to make Pearland such as a very special place for people to live, work, and play?
As far as things that stood out to us, things that we don't often get to see, affordability, family-friendly community, those definitely, there were indicators there that were above benchmarks, both nationally and also looking at the custom subset of communities that is more like Pearland in terms of population and median household income. And as far as things that stood out in the other direction, which I already covered there, were more mobility-related aspects. And that's actually pretty common for our clients that are located in metro areas in terms of ease of getting around.
Thank you.
Family-friendly community definitely stood out to us.
A little mess up there, Council for any questions? I think it's been a good report, and I appreciate you working and getting some information for us.
A lot of the negative comments or statistics are related to the fact that we've grown so fast, and we're still catching up on a lot of the infrastructure and trails and things like that, which seem to be where we rank lower. So, I think in years to come, you'll see improvements in that area. Thank you for all the hard work.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Okay.
Another question from the Council at this point?
Yes, Mayor. I think a couple of points that we need to take for this. Obviously, we're gonna update this study every two years. We need to keep an eye on trends. I appreciate the input. I think there's a few things that we need to note. I think what's the most important component of this study is to take a look at, one, are people happy with the job that we're doing? I think generally overwhelmingly, they are happy with the job that we're doing, but that doesn't mean that there's not room for improvement. And where that improvement lies, I think, is based on this study, one of which is, I think, we kind of predicted is mobility. Looking at the, overall mobility was a big concern of the citizens, particularly in Shadow Creek, even though they were highly pleased with the cities in general. They rated about 42% on their opinion about mobility, which is, again, not unpredictable, but certainly something that we need to take into account when devising our future plans. I also think that the downward trend towards our recreational facilities and our recreational options also needs to kind of feed us into our future decision-making. I know staff does this already. There's always kind of a line in the capital improvement program and some of the documents that you send out to us, but maybe more boldly or continue to remind us that, you know, as we build our capital projects, as we move towards, you know, what we're programmed for next five years, highlight to us, you know, these are why we're prioritizing this. And then, as we make decisions, we can focus on, okay, we really need to focus on mobility over the next few years because that's where we're trending down. That's where our citizens are most upset. Also, where they're upset, the northern part between, north of 518 between 288 and 35 is generally substantially unhappy with their mobility issues. I think that's kind of understandable. We haven't really had a significant project in that corridor for a while. We have some that are in play right now. But I do think that we don't need to take this study as just granted, and we do it every couple of years and pat ourselves on the back that 92% of the people rate us well. I think Member Owens thinks that the 17% has solely contributed to me. So, it's probably true. It's probably 100% true. So, we had two more years of tolerating, tolerating me up here. But I think that this needs to be a fundamental document to all of us as council members to guide us in what our decisions can be, because it shows us that our citizens are happy, but we need, we want to stop downward trends. We want to make sure that we're responsive to what they're telling us. And more than 300 citizens have told us mobility and Parks and Rec is where we need to focus. Hopefully, as we get into our next year budget session, we start arriving the CIP for the next five years or the tail end of the next five years. This will be expressly informative. Thank you very much. The study's fantastic.
Of course. Thank you. And I also briefly wanted to touch on city staff. Some members of city staff also heard the same presentation remotely last week, and I also presented some examples of ways in which other communities that we work with have used their survey results to effect change. So, that content, you can talk to Josh, he's got a copy of that, if you'd like to learn more about that. And also, as always, continue to reach directly out to us if you have further questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I thought it was quite appropriate right now at this time, as we're developing our city as we were going. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving in our agenda to, Clay, did you have any wrap-up comments?
No, I appreciate the comments, and we take these in the same sentiment. I mean, we want everybody to be happy all the time, but at the same time, we're realistic. And I think, you know, as Mayor Protem mentioned, we're continuing this growth spurt. We got a lot of things going on, and confident as we're able to deliver those, you know, even the near term. We'll see some most physical things happening, and on the operations side, we're just, you know, do everything we can to let people know what we offer and make available services that are here and deliver the whole package. So, thank you, sir.
Moving in our agenda to item number four. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2020-12, so moved.
Motion second on the floor with Staff Report.
This is a Mayor and Council decision on appointments to the HGAC. The item is tagged up so that the mayor could continue to serve and Member Carbone as the alternate. And the mayor's been representative and done extraordinary for the city on that board, and this would set that up to continue for the mayor's term.
At the current time, I'm the official member, and Councilmember Moore is the alternate and done a good job. We're both going off the council. And where the decision was made, and I endorse it strongly, that we've selected an individual like Tony Carbone to be my alternate until, I'll be the delegate until May, which my term ends. And then, at that point, is it June? Okay. Wow, I got a little more time than I thought. But, huh?
One day.
But once my term ends and Tony as the alternate can move up, and then the council will determine who Tony's alternate would be at that point. So, it works out well. Let's give him a chance to get familiar with the Houston-Gauster County Council, and it's a pretty complex organization, and it works an awful lot on people who attend the meetings and find out what's going on so that you can make sure that you're taking good care of your community. And we've been doing that pretty well so far, so. That information, the record, the Council have a question or comment on this? Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item number five. Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action First Reading, ordinance number 2,000 M-195, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion.
Mayor and Council, this is an item for your consideration of first reading. You saw this at a joint public hearing. It's a request from the applicant for a zone change. This is going from the OP to a neighborhood services district, which is probably more appropriate for this area that's transitional on Walnut, mostly commercial in the area in that corridor, and for your consideration here on the first reading of this.
Council, have any question or comment from this staff report? Fairly done. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Motion passes four to two.
Moving in our agenda, item number six. Councilmember Owens?
Consideration Possible Action, second and final reading, ordinance number 2,000 M-187, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Mayor and Council, and this is likewise a zone change request from our West Development. This is for zone change from the existing single-family and light industrial to a planned development project, and this does require a supermajority, I believe, from the council because of the recommendation from your Planning and Zoning Commission.
Council, have any question or comment based on Staff Report?
I misstated there. I'm sorry. I think that was a positive. I misremembered that. It was a positive. I apologize, so.
Is the Council have a question or comment based on Staff Report? Adhere on that one. Fairly done. Madam Secretary, I think we've got a second sitting on the floor here.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Councilmember Orlando?
Consideration Impossible Action First Reading of Ordinance 2,000 M-196, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. This is a request by the city as the applicant for property that we own and for also property that's owned by the Gulf Coast Water Authority. This is an area that was newly annexed and put into this suburban district, holding district once it was annexed. This property that is well-intended and well-planned for future surface water treatment plants along the canal there. And this suburban, I'm sorry, the residential district is the standard. That's how zoning things are done for municipal uses and educational uses, other kinds of things, provide some continuity with the surrounding areas. But, so the recommendation, what you saw at the JPH, is set up for this to be this residential district, and this is a first reading.
Council, have any question or comment based on Staff Report?
Quick question. How much of this land will be used for the water treatment center?
For the facility, and it's all owned by the city and/or the Gulf Coast Water Authority, so it'll be public use in some fashion. So, whether it's, you know, staging for the facility or some other kinds of uses, that's the intention for the entirety.
So, none of it will be developed for residential?
No, that's in public ownership, so no forecast that'd be residential like that.
No, foresee the city selling any of it for residential development?
Don't foresee that at all. I protect ourselves, provide buffers along the facility.
All right. Thank you.
Any question or comment by Council at this point? Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second sitting here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item eight. Councilmember Carbone, should do the orders.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R2020-2, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Where's Staff Report?
And likewise, Mayor, this is another contract for chemicals used in our water operations, and this is a larger amount we use more often, the bleach component, and estimated at the 347,500. We pay for it as we use it under these prices. Anything to add, sir?
Any question or comment from the Council based on Staff Report? Fairly done. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item nine. Mayor and Council issued for council discussion. There were none of the business. There is none. Item nine, which will let me, excuse me, not a muller, but it is adjourned this meeting